Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Otomo City Council meeting. It's 5:30, so I'm gonna call the council meeting to order. And if everybody would please rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre? Councilmember Cavendish?
Here.
Councilmember Basu?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. The next item is to approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
I want a second. I don't want to take a second. I don't want to take something off the agenda, and I don't want to take anybody's time. And they, everybody was aware I was gonna do this. I just want to say I'm gonna vote yes for the agenda, but I am against item number four on the agenda, which is our department promotions.
Is there any further discussion? Would you ask Mr. Hoffman to repeat what he said? I couldn't hear.
We have some feedback over here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I told everybody this was, that I was gonna do this. This is no surprise. I, I'm gonna vote yes for the consent agenda because I don't want to take it off and take more time. I just wanted everybody to know I'm in disagreement with item number four, which is promotions for the fire department.
Thanks. Okay, if there's no other discussion, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
The next item is to approve our agenda for tonight's city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Okay, the next item, the city administrators report to the council and the citizens of Otomo. So I'll turn it over to Cheryl Rath, our city administrator.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I'd like to begin my comments tonight with a big thank you to everyone who ventured out to vote in a special election last Tuesday. Following the election, the city council will look a little different, as we will be saying goodbye to Councilwoman Basu for now, and welcoming Dan Reed to the city council. The election results were certified earlier today, and Dan will be sworn into office at the train depot this coming Monday, September 23rd, about 9:30 a.m. Another item on the ballot, and the real reason I would like to thank the voters, is the passage of the measure to continue the local auction sales and services tax with the revised split. As Finance Director O'Donnell mentioned in an earlier meeting, this alone will not solve all the financial matters for the city, but with profit planning and smart spending should buy the cities the much-needed time. This is especially welcome, as there are reports the state legislature intends to take up further efforts related to property tax reform next session. While I get to meet the person who sincerely says I would love to pay more taxes, the part that often gets missed is that these taxes are will contribute to delivery of services. To assist city staff, the city council and the public with viewing the cost of these services in the future, the updated financial software should be online soon and is planned to be utilized for the upcoming budgeting process. Additionally, next year's budget and future financial reports will include an updated look for capital projects due to the revised financial software. Regarding capital projects, this past Saturday, there was a ribbon-cutting for the Dan Stegs tennis courts. This project is a testament to what can happen when community partners come together with a common purpose. I believe it was Superintendent McGory who commented, in our mission to be the best, we needed to ensure that our students and the community had top-notch facilities. Having kids in the school district myself and participating in their various activities, I really liked the concept of be the best. And I believe it mirrors one of the primary values adopted by the city, which is continuous improvement. There are other projects in and around the city that continue to progress and will add much-needed value to the community, such as a sportsplex, soccer fields, city hall renovation, and expanded rail system. And I understand the mayor has some additional comments for tonight. Then I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Yes, the council had adopted me for a couple minutes, instead of waiting till the end of our council meeting. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize some folks this evening. And the first one is somebody that I personally have a tremendous amount of respect for. I've talked to her for many, many years when I worked in downtown Otomo. And tonight, we're gonna honor Sue Smith, who is known as our downtown maintenance specialist. I believe she works under Main Street's program, and she's retiring after 25 years of service to downtown Otomo, which we are extremely grateful for. I'm gonna go ahead and read this press release, and then I think Fred maybe has some things he'd like to say, and I don't know if he has. Some other folks that want to talk as well. "The city of Otomo is bidding a fond farewell to Sue Smith, who has been the heart and soul behind the flourishing flower beds in downtown Otomo for the past 25 years. Since May 25th, 1999, Sue has dedicated herself to beautifying the community, ensuring that every blossom and green space in the downtown area thrived. Her expert care has played a significant role in making downtown Otomo a welcoming environment for both residents and visitors. Sue has been a witness to and a participant in the many phases of downtown's development. It has been an absolute honor to work with Sue over the years," as quoted by Fred Zesiger, executive director of Main Street at Otomo. "He also continues, Sue's impact on downtown Otomo will be felt for years to come. We are extremely grateful for her service and wish her all the best in her well-deserved retirement. The flower beds have become iconic symbols of the city's charm and community spirit, reflecting Sue's deep love for her work and the place she calls home. The city of Otomo and Main Street at Otomo would like to express its deepest gratitude for her many years of service and dedication." So, Sue, thank you very, very much. I believe Fred has something he'd like to say, maybe?
Yeah, I just wanna add, you know, Sue's, like you just said, has been around for 25 years, and the downtown for those 25 years have been a wonderful, vibrant place for people to be. She's actually been in that position longer than Main Street has been in our community. But every year, you know, I don't know where we'd be without her. Come November, we'll be ordering flowers again. That's something that Sue's always done. She always brings that list into me, and we order those for the following spring. So, we're gonna be really big shoes to fill, Sue, and we're gonna, yeah.
You wanna come up?
Sure.
Sue, you wanna come on up here?
Get a picture for help.
So, from myself and the board, you know, you're a big part of our team, and we're super glad that you're gonna get to enjoy some of your retirement. Thank you, Sue. Sue, I can remember when there were times you had to fight for water, wanting the flowers to go. But you got them then.
Yeah, I used to hook up to fire hydrants. Break those heavy hoes everywhere.
Good job.
Then push over to the tanks.
Well, if the flower beds next year aren't up to your standard, I'm gonna tell Freddie he needs to bring it back. Okay, the next thing I'd like to just briefly talk about, we've been very fortunate this past week that two of our police investigators were honored and recognized by the US Department of Justice. And on September 6th, 2024, there was a prolific sex trafficker who was sentenced to 40 years in federal prison on charges of sex trafficking and travel to engage in prostitution. Otomo Police Investigators Jeremy Tosh and Caleb Mitchell provided exceptional investigative skill and time to the conviction and sentence of this horrific sex trafficker. We commend and express our gratitude for the supreme efforts of Investigator Tosh and Investigator Mitchell, and the support and leadership and their coworkers at the Otomo Police Department in this challenging and complex case. So, I would just really like to take this opportunity, I have said ever since I've been mayor that I think we have the best police departments in the state, and I still stand by that. They don't nearly get enough credit for what they do throughout the year, so I think it's highly important that we give them their due credit when due credit is due. And so, just want to extend our extreme appreciation to both of those investigators for their exemplary work on this sex trafficking case. And I sent them an email the other day. I think you got it too.
Yes.
So, Jason, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't. I agree with your statement that those investigators did an absolutely fantastic job, very kind to me, going back and forth, crying, everything else at the end of it, but I just wanna say thank you, those kind words towards our department, and we tried to be very, very just each other, and thank you very much.
Well, you do an outstanding job.
Jason, I want to personally thank your department, because I think we do have the best police department in the state. And when you have two individuals that stand out like that, that shows the, that shows that that's a reflection of the whole department. They're all outstanding officers. And I sleep well at night knowing that those men and women are out there, so thank you.
There are several people in this room that are members of the Wapo County Coalition Against Human Trafficking. And unfortunately, we all realize that sex trafficking and labor trafficking does occur in Iowa, and we've had instances of both of those things right here in Otomo. So, it is something that everybody needs to keep their guard up. It's a horrific thing to have in your community, but it seems to be rampant all over the United States anymore. So, really applaud our Otomo Police Department for really going the extra mile and really working on these cases to get those folks incarcerated and arrested, so thank you. The other thing, I guess, and Phil kind of mentioned it already, I really hate to see Cyan leave our city council. You've been an exemplary person this past year on our city council. You brought a very fresh and new perspective to many, many things that I have really appreciated. And we wish you the best, and like I said, there's another election here from now, so I hope you'll consider running again, because we're really gonna miss you. Thank you for a wonderful job. Okay. The next item is where I ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on any of tonight's agenda items. If so, they need to fill out the little white slip over there by J.D. We don't have any up here, so I don't know if anybody wants to speak on any of tonight's agenda items. If you do, raise your hand if anybody does want to speak. What item do you want to speak on?
13?
13? I-13? Okay. When we get there, I'll have to come up. Okay. The next, we have no public hearings tonight. We have no ordinances tonight, so the next thing is departmental board or commission recommendations, and I believe, Zach, you're gonna handle this, but Sue, Chris, we'll go ahead and read it first.
Issue refund for taxes due on a vacant lot at 119 North Ward. Recommendation, authorize staff to issue a refund in April and Michael Shilkis at the amount of $107 for taxes due on the vacant lot at 119 North Ward.
Okay, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor. In March of '24, the city sold the vacant lot at 119 North Ward to April and Michael Shilkis for $250. They also paid closing costs on that. When the city acquires property, we typically file a letter to the county requesting abatement of any previously due taxes. We acquired this in 2019, and in that duration, that letter wasn't sent. So, that lot, they know that they received their first tax bill and had taxes due from a previous owner before 2019. Those lots are purchased with a clean deed, with no representations or anything like that. But we do, you know, generally give the impression that those are clean titles. We intend for them to be clean titles. We don't intend for there to be back taxes or anything like that. Working with the attorney, they do think it's appropriate and allowed for us to do a refund for the amount of those back taxes, which is $107.
Does council have any questions for Zach regarding this item? Okay.
I need it first, then a second.
I'll motion.
Second.
I motion for a second.
Okay, then Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes. Resolution number 195, 2024, accepting the work is finally complete and approving the final pay request for the Elm Street reconstruction project. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number 195, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, Phillip.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So, this project involves a full width, full depth concrete reconstruction of Elm Street from Main Street to Second Street. It also included new storm and sanitary sewer. The original contract amount was $519,777. Change order number one decreased that amount by $27,592 for a total contract amount of $492,185. The contract has been completed and the work was done according to the specifications. This resolution will release all retainage and authorized final payment in the amount of $81,775.96 to Jones Contrary Corp., of West Point, Iowa. I got a few pictures here of the project, so you guys can see what it was beforehand. So, this is looking north from Main Street before. Next one is looking down from Second Street, and then there's one more before picture after this showing some of the worst areas of the street. Next, you, first step on the construction project was to do the sanitary sewer. So, you can see the new sanitary sewers in like that blue-green color. The white is a white. They're gonna connect the sewer lateral to that. Then you can see the excavator up the hill, the pavement above where they did the sewers. And the next one is how to do compaction testing. So, we, anytime we dig a trench under the street, we'll compaction test that trench. It's every two feet above the trench, or two feet above the pipe, and then every 200 feet longitudinally. That, oh, go back once. So, that little yellow box up there, it's a nuclear density meter, and it has a radioactive element in the tip of a, of a, kinda like a pin. They shove that down to the dirt, and then the amount of radiation come back up, and that's how they calculate what the density is of that material. There's a curved correlative material type with the radiation come back, and they get tell by that how dense it is relative to their compaction tests. This is the storm sewer. We had a couple alleys and intakes, or intakes and alleys that was still combined. So, we took the opportunity to pull those, those intakes off, and this is an intake next to a house and alleyway right north of Main Street. Getting ready to be connected back up. Sanitary, it's a subgrade, sorry. So, once everything else goes to low ground, we proof roll the subgrade, get it cut to the correct slope, and then they'll go through and they'll put subgrade in. And if any water gets underneath the pavement, will flow through the subbase and along the ground, and it'll go into these trenches, and those tile will take it and dump it back in the storm sewer. Then once the, once the tile's in, the subgrands in, we start putting subbase down, like the six inches of subbase down under every street. This shows them stockpiling, as they're ready to spread out, and the next picture will show it after it's been spread out, compacted, trimmed. This is right before they're ready to pave. So, the next picture, so starting paving, they'll back the paper up as close as they can get. They started with Main Street here, so they backed the paper as close as they could get to the existing pavement. And as they pull away, it'll fill in that little gap by hand. That way, they can not to come back later on, patch it back in, and fix it for a continuous, continuous pour. This is halfway up the hill. You can say it's a pretty big project. It takes probably 12 to 15 people to run a paper correctly, to be able to finish it, you know, do any driveway drops you have to do, and get everything moving and to spread out like it's supposed to. This is after they paved the main paper, the main part of the street. Then you still have to go back, and here they are pouring in the intersection of Second Street. Next one is like driveways. Yeah, so they got to do driveways still. I don't think when you get the main line paper, now they're done, but there's a lot of steps in between. Like I said, there's interchanges you gotta do, or intersections you gotta do, driveways, you got sidewalks, tech warnings. There are boxouts, so main roads have to be boxed out or separately. And then once all that's done, you gotta backfill this then right before they got seating done. Next one, you'll see where they hide their seating, behind the curb. And the next view will show the finished product as of a couple days ago. So, it's looking north from Main Street now. You can see where that, go back one. That black line across there, that's the joint where the whole new pavement men. And then most of the grass has come in yet. There's kind of spots where it's, looks like it's not there, but it's just, it's a little bit there. I don't know if it was just a little bit harder soil, a little bit less rain in that spot. It's weird. Sometimes you'll get spots where it's, it'll grow in the shade and not the sun. Sometimes it grows the sun and not the shade. This kind of delays the germination. Then there's a couple more pictures going up the hill of what the street looks like now versus, what was it, one more, I think. And that's one of the intersections of that, anyways. Anyway, that's where your money went.
I really appreciate you for showing some of that, because, you know, you always hear people say, you know, Otomo doesn't anything about their streets. And I know your department continually throughout the year does a lot on several of our streets, so I really appreciate giving an explanation. So, taxpayers are aware that Otomo is making a lot of big improvements on some of the streets in Otomo.
I just have a quick question. So, not in this particular, but if trees have to be taken down because of road, like fixing the roads, do we replace those trees?
No, if this, well, it depends. If it's in the right of way, we don't. City orders, it's like, you can, you can plant stuff in the right of way if you want to, but you have to realize that it's a right of way. There's utilities in there. There's streets in there. We had to take one tree out for this project, because the paper would fit. So, unfortunately, sometimes the tree's part of the fact, we get paper baskets past it, but there's no guarantee if you plant something in the right of way that it's gonna be there after the, after a construction project's done. It could even be a utility that comes through there and needs to take a tree out.
Thank you.
We try not to go out of our way to take trees. That will save the, if we can.
Mr. Bergermeier?
Yes.
Two questions. Number one, how far down the hill does this repair go?
It goes between Main Street and Second Street. I believe it's around 800 feet long, so two blocks, pretty much.
Okay. And the people that live on that street, how do they access their property when they're in the construction?
This project had alleys, so they all had alley access. So, it's always convenient to live on every avenue, anyway. So, if your street is ready, then you have a way to get to your house. Unfortunately, not every street's like that.
Thank you.
Council have any other questions for Phillip? All right, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes. Resolution number 196, 2024, authorizing renewal of Medicare Supplemental Plan for retirees for 2025. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number 196, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Bart Kocho, our HR director, it's all yours.
Thank you, sir. So, this is the resolution that came from our special work session that we had last week. So, this is the renewal of Humana, which is our Medicare Supplement Plan for employees that were hired prior to 1993. About this time every year, we give renewal packets from Humana. This year, with a lot of the changes in Medicare Part D, you saw an increase of 18.33% in the rates. Overall, the changes that came from Humana were very beneficial to the numbers. So, what this resolution does is it is going to, we are going to split, instead of doing a 460 split, now with our retirees, we will do a 50/50 split. They will pay 50% of the monthly premium. We will pay 50% of the monthly premium.
And do we have their consent at this point? Anybody say they don't want to do that?
I have not heard from anyone, but we also have not sent any letters or anything out at this point, since it's not been officially voted on yet. So, I would imagine we will probably get some feedback from some of the employees that I had spoken with previously about it, that maybe it doesn't affect them directly right now, but it will in the future. The couple that I spoke to understood, with given the significant changes that the federal government made with Medicare, it was understood that the prices are going to go a little bit.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council for Bart? Okay, if not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number 197, 2024, approving a contract with Willa Hoffman to provide professional services for the cemetery office and maintenance building project. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number 197, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Don't move. Second.
Okay, Jean.
Thank you, Your Honor. Willa Hoffman has provided a contract for $29,500 to provide bidding and contract administration services for the city of Otomo for the cemetery office and maintenance building project. These services are needed, because this is a large, complex project, and the Parks and Recreation Department does not have an engineer or a construction inspector on staff. Otomo Cemetery Board of Trustees approved the contract with Willa Hoffman at a meeting on September 4th, 2024. This contract is an extension of the original agreement with Willa Hoffman to provide professional services for the cemetery office and maintenance building project that was approved by the Otomo City Council on November 1st, 2022.
Council have any questions for Jean? The project would probably not get built till like next year.
We're planning on this being a 2025 project, yes.
Was this put out for bid?
No, we're not that far along yet. We plan to have the public hearing on October 15th. That's when we'll start the process with the city council.
What about the contractor? Have we bid that out or not?
No, we do not have a contractor yet. We're just hiring Willa Hoffman to help us, assist us with this project, so that we can then put it out for bid when we get to that point. And then Paul Newman from Willa Hoffman will supervise the construction of the project along with my assistance.
They were the architects for the project, right?
Yes, they wrote all the plans and specifications for the project.
And those were approved by the committee?
Yes. Approved by the cemetery board.
Any other questions from council? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number 199, 2024, fixing an amount for abating a nuisance against certain lots in the city of Otomo for 2023 grass and weed mine assessments totaling $53,245 for 73 properties. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number 199, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Zach, it's all yours.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. The next three items are all assessments for recovering costs for abatements. It's the mowing assessments for 2023, and then it's nuisance abatement cleanups, and then it's property demolitions. The first two, we've had a pretty good routine process year by year of doing the mowing assessments, doing the nuisance abatement assessments, but I do want to give credit to Jake Rush. There was some institutional memory that left with Jody Gates retired, and included in that was really how we did the process for demolition abatements. And he was able to kind of reconstruct that whole program, had to go back and do a lot of research into legal descriptions for properties, how that process will work, and also reconstructing how we'll bill it with the code enforcement software that we use now to track costs and things like that for cleanups and all that work. So, I want to give a lot of credit for putting that together. You will see a couple other past years for demolition abatements coming up at future meetings as we get caught up. And we're also gonna plan on billing those as demolitions occur, so that we don't be in a situation where property changes hands between the demolition and when the assessment happens, and people think that they got a different date than they did. So, you'll see those more regularly as part of our demolition process. This one, though, is just for mowing. This is the mowing charges that were not paid for mowing in 2023. We had 73 properties that were mowed. They received a bill for that mowing, and they didn't pay that bill. And so, by law, we have the authority to assess that to their property tax in order to recover that cost. This is a total assessment of $53,254 between those 73 properties.
Do those individuals just give one notice from the city?
So, they usually do get only one notice. The grass grows pretty fast, and we, we believe that one notice really for the year covers us to a lot of building damages.
So, hardly any of those people ever pay them?
We get a certain amount to pay the bill when they receive the bill for the mowing service. I don't know the percentage, but a lot of these would be vacant abandoned lots or cases where somebody doesn't pay.
So, if the city eventually gets those lots, then we lose that money?
Yeah, that is what we're sold. Yeah, we could end up acquiring these lots on tax sale because of these systems.
So, if we sell those lots, we bring that assessment back against the sale?
We probably could. We generally don't. We probably could. We generally don't. If we are going to sell the lot, we usually just try to figure out what the fair price would be, either a policy vacant lot policy price of two hundred and fifty dollars, or if there's a special consideration, that price can go up. But we would probably just talk about the fair value of the lot and whether we want to factor other costs in, recovering other costs. We would just make the part of sale price. We wouldn't sell it with the assessment attached.
Why do we, why do we bother to assess the property if we're not going to try and charge?
So most of, so most of these people, we would want them to pay the cost. We, we want them to pay their tax bill, keep their property, and recover the cost.
And that debt's not going to follow them once the property has been acquired by the city, right?
In that case, it would, no.
Well, and, and it would be up to the city council to waive those costs at that time if you so chose. You wouldn't have to, but it may be the difference between the sale or not having that sale. But it would come before you again to consider that waiver. It's not just automatic.
Okay. Any other questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes. Resolution number two hundred, twenty twenty-four, fixing an amount for abating a nuisance against certain lots in the city of Atoma for twenty twenty-three cleanup assessments totaling fifty-five thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-one cents for forty properties. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number two hundred and twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation. Second.
Okay, Zach.
All right. Thank you. This one is dealing with nuisance abatement cleanups. This is when we issue a notice for trash in the yard, incorrect outdoor storage, whatever it is that we might have to go in and clean up if it's not cleaned up. Sometimes we do this under a court order. Sometimes if it's a little bit more routine, it's three couches that have been sitting on the curb for four months, we just pick those up. We don't go to court get in order to do that. But that's what this is for. It's for those nuisance abatement cleanups. This is for a total of forty properties. All these properties received a bill and they didn't pay it. It remains unpaid. The total cost for assessments here for these forty properties is fifty-five thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars forty-one cents.
I have the same question one more time. Are we going to assess that when the lots are sold? Get some of our money back if not all of it?
That I guess would be for the council to look at the vacant lot policy. If you want to make a change to how we sell the vacant lots, I do think that we will probably have a lot less success selling vacant lots if we're carrying over the assessments. But we could try to recover more cost in that process if the council wants to go that direction.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Zach? All right, Chris, take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes. Resolution number two oh one, twenty twenty-four, fixing an amount for abating a nuisance against certain lots in the city of Atoma for twenty twenty-three demolition assessments totaling two hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and four cents for twelve properties. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number two oh one, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Zach.
All right. Thank you. These are the demolition abatements for properties that were condemned by the Board of Health in twenty twenty-three and were demolished. We demolished twelve properties. That's off the pace that we usually like to keep. We got to the point where we had spent basically all of the, the money that was available for that. When we received the new round of bond proceeds, we were able to hit the ground running. And I think we're going to demolish quite a few more than twelve this year. We might get around thirty. But this is for twelve. It was two hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and four cents that was billed but not recovered for these. I guess I will say also, just kind of further into the last question, part of the goal with the vacant lot policy is to, instead of recovering direct cash for selling the lots, is to try to incentivize development on the lots and recovering all that cost over time in the value of new development. And so that's another consideration that we made, you turned to that person.
It seems like many times now where people are just buying the lot or green space.
And we have really cut back on trying to do that. The new version of the vacant lot policy requires us to say if a lot is fifty feet wide, a hundred and twenty feet deep, suitable for building a house, we won't sell that lot for green space. That can obviously be appealed with the council inside, you know, special characteristics or something like that. But that's generally what we try to do is to reserve for.
Counselor, is there any questions for Zach?
So when all of these lots come up for sale, assuming they will, are we going to get a toll of debt against them for the council to look at, adding in all these three issues right now?
We could do that. Yeah, these were, these particular lots won't come to the council for quite a while if we were even acquired. We'd have to first have this not paid for long enough for it to be eligible as for a tax sale deed. Then we'd have to allow that tax sale deed for the amount of time we have to. Then we'd have to foreclose on it. Then we have to find someone that wants to buy it. So we're talking three or four years for these particular lots. But when lots come up, in general, we could try and.
Where does the money come from for demolition?
This is a bond proceeds. Our capital improvement planning for the last quite a while of this program has been, has included an item for demolition. And so when we've demolished homes, we've done that with the bond proceeds, CIP. Going back three or four years, we also had some money from the Legacy Foundation that was spread out over several years. They contributed, I want to say a million dollars to this program. That money's all been spent now. But we have also had a lot of help in the past.
So what we need to do is hold our hand up again?
I, we have done that before. And we would definitely hope that when they have some availability after the soccer project and they look at their next set of goals that we're going to want to.
Could it be such a thing with the county treasurer when they send out property tax statements to homeowners, that they get tagged on a certain amount of this every time they send them out, they gradually get that paid back?
Uh, I think there's a way to set up a payment plan with the treasurer's office for past due taxes, but I, I don't know enough about that to say. Most of these, specifically the demos, the grass mowing, the cleanups, a lot of those do eventually get paid. These ones, generally, there is a large value to the property owner now that the house is going.
Thank you, Zach. I wanted to give him your hard time.
No, I appreciate the question. It's a, it's a lot of money that goes into doing these cleanups, doing this work, and we want to try to recover as much as we possibly can.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Not Chris, take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes. Resolution number two oh two, twenty twenty-four, establishing permit fee for golf cart registration per section twenty-three, five thirty-three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atoma, Iowa. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number two oh two, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation. Second.
Okay. Phil, I believe you're going to take this?
Yes, General Mayor. September third, twenty twenty-four, the third final reading of ordinance thirty-two, thirty-two dash twenty twenty-four, which went in chapter twenty-three, motor vehicles and traffic, adding golf carts, was approved by the city council. In accordance with that ordinance, the city council is set to, is to set the registration fee for golf cart permitting. Staff has evaluated the process of issuance, enforcement, looking at what other communities do as well, and is recommending an annual fee of sixty dollars and per code, and that would be eligible for proration. And we're recommending proration on a quarterly basis, which would be fifteen dollars per quarter or fraction thereof.
I would like to, I'd like to speak if I may on that. I think that's absorbent. I think it's unnecessary. Think that ten or fifteen dollars would be a reasonable fee. That's my opinion.
So the, the fee was established, I said, based on looking at what they're doing, but also looking at the fee to issue the permit, but also from an enforcement standpoint as well. And that was mentioned during the, the process of the ordinance, the impact this may have on law enforcement and their ability to enforce. So it was also playing into that. And that's where the dollar amount was, was established. But that is your purview as the council to set any figure.
Could I ask a police one a question? Sorry, I can't remember your name. How long would it take to inspect a golf cart in order to certify it for registration?
Inspection, basically what you have to do, if I recall correctly, I think requires like turn signals, but we can require checking to make sure someone had a valid driver's license, insurance is in there, and then everything else as far as, you know, what's required per the, the city ordinance and golf cart. Can I give it an amount of time?
Better fifteen minutes, probably.
I'm not, I'm not for sure. Because we haven't been done, but I'd say it would be incredibly long time.
I was under the impression that they just had to provide all that information to the city clerk's office, and that the police department technically doesn't have to do any inspection before the certificate is issued. I mean, you would have the ongoing responsibility of enforcing stuff that they don't do what they're supposed to do. But I understood that they weren't going to have to actually inspect golf carts.
And that was my understanding also. There was inspection of.
It is the ongoing enforcement of golf carts. So if they are not registered and having to pull over and going through that, if somebody is registered and gets pulled over for something, making sure that they have all of, so that, you know, traffic stop or done the take, in addition to issuing the, the license, the cost of the stickers, et cetera. So that, that's what it was going into.
Or even if it was an accident.
Well, it would seem to me like after the fact, there's all the time to tell the owner that they made a mistake not meeting all the requirements. Would seem to be like, get your certification from the court out of your area, but get it passed by a police department who can actually take a look at it and understand that it is functional and meets the requirements.
I think though, so I just, I would identify, I think sixty dollars is fair. But I would also, just to that point, I don't take my car in to get approved by an officer prior to driving. So I think that our officers have other things to do too, to then, to do an inspection. I'm sure that they would do an inspection if someone came to them and said, hey, is my car, golf cart legal?
I'm sorry, if I may interject. You know, that's, I think part of the application process would be part of that. And that goes through, from my understanding, that would go from city hall to the police department. That's that application process. I'm.
Per, per city code, that's correct.
The other thing I want to mention is that this is a fee that has to be paid every year. When they come back to re-certify it again, they got to bring another sixty dollars with them. I don't think that's reasonable.
Well, I pay five hundred dollars every year for my car, which seems unreasonable. Sixty dollars for a golf cart seems pretty reasonable. I would also venture to say that, number one, sixty dollars for a golf cart, if you're looking for alternative forms of transportation is pretty reasonable. And if you're using this for a joyride, sixty dollars is minimal in, in aspect of everything that you have put into your golf carts and make it safe for driving streets. I also would say that this would probably be something we should have considered if we approved this ordinance in the first place. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council on this item?
I think when we approved this ordinance, it made a statement in there that the council would be able to approve the fee.
Well, that's what we're happy to do it now.
Well, it sounds to me like somebody, somebody else has made a recommendation and they just want us to rubber stamp it.
Well, I, and I don't want to push back on, on Councilman Cavaness. I think he, I think he looked at, when we set up the whole proposal, we were new. So we kind of had to look at what other towns were doing. I mean, I, I see both sides. Sixty dollars a little bit high. Yeah, probably. I think so. But it does keep people responsible. And I, you know, with a list of, just to address the issue of, they're going to be given a list of specifications. And then, so they know going into it when they pay the registration that these specifications have to be met. So if an officer has to pull them over, they're already aware and register what those specifications are. So like I said, I, I push back a little. I can understand sixty dollars, probably a little high, but not when you compare it to, to the market and not when you compare it to what others are doing. And like I said, I think it would assist in keeping it, you know, responsible. Nobody's going to pay sixty dollars in the top of the wall. So I think it helps in different areas, different aspects and areas of owning that, that golf cart.
And I think City Administrator Raffin already said the city staff took some time to review what other towns of comparable size that have these programs are charging. So it sounds like that was already taken into account within that, that sixty dollar fee.
And we also, yeah, and we also have to take into the, to account the hours from our staff that it's going to take, the time, and then the supplies that are needed too. And so, I mean, tags.
This will be more work for the city clerk's office.
So I think it's just, I think sixty dollars is a reasonable amount, especially as councilperson I am identified that, you know, with, if it's an alternate means of transportation.
I would like to push back one more time. Keep in mind that they also have to buy a slow moving sign and a flag, which is certified to a certain height and put on their car. So there's more expense than just registering it.
But I think you can go to, I mean, Dollar Tree is one of my favorite stores. I'll just be honest. And I did see a slow moving sign there a few months back. So a dollar twenty-five. Not that it's there anymore, but.
Any other comments or questions from council or Phil?
Yeah, I just comment that recommendation is a fee. But again, it is within the purview of the council. So while that is the recommendation, I'm not looking for rubber stamp, but then, that is what we believe was there.
Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
No.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution number two oh four, twenty twenty-four, directing acceptance of a proposal to purchase seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, subject to adjustment, general obligation capital loan notes, series twenty twenty-four B. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number two oh four, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you. Three proposals received on September sixteenth. Huntington Bank of Cincinnati, Ohio was the best qualified bid rate with three dollars, or three point eight five percent. The proposed lease agreement has had a rate of five point eight two percent. So we're saving two full points. The loan amount is seven hundred and fifty-five thousand with proceeds of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. I have attached the bid summary proposals and those review email out yesterday.
And City Clerk Chris, we can remove that.
Well, you have the new ones printed off, right?
Does council have any questions for Cole? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes. Resolution number two oh seven, twenty twenty-four, approving an agreement with Prager and Tumble Partners in Progress for limited sponsorship of the twentieth annual holiday nights and lights. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number two oh seven, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I guess this one's mine. I feel to put this on the agenda. Two years ago, the city of Atoma did go ahead and put a display in where holiday nights and lights. Last year, they did not choose to do that. But I personally think it's a good public relations thing to do for the community. It does meet the definition of public purpose. And I just personally would like to see the council go ahead and, and approve a five hundred dollar or less display for this year's holiday lights and nights, even though I know that they get to use Atoma Park, the city helps pay the electric bill. I still think it's nice when the public can see that the city is also participating in some of the displays.
Mayor, we, we did get to do it last year. We just didn't get the police to have been done one last year.
Oh, I didn't think we did. Okay. Thank you.
One comment about the five hundred dollars. Probably the best five hundred dollars that were spent. I, I absolutely love holiday nights and lights. We get so many visitors to Atoma Park from out of town. It really showcases, it really showcases Atoma. People come from out, people by season pass. These people, it's one of the most enjoyable things of the holiday. So I think five hundred dollars is probably the least we can do to show the city support with the amount of people it brings and just the pure amount of joy it brings to citizens in this area. So. Interesting. Quick to that point, one of the things, you know, we get requests from various entities for dollars for this or sponsorship for that. You think where this one is, is different is, is based on that point, is we're able to show that public purpose, that, that dollars are coming back in the community from the traffic, from the visitors coming in, in what they're purchasing while they're here. And so that, part of this is signed an agreement that establishes that public purpose, that in exchange for the five hundred dollars, we're getting those benefits back into the community. And dollars that raised during the event go back into other not-for-profits, they'll volunteer. And so they get dollars within the community as well from that event.
Any other comments?
I do have comments. So I'm usually the grand.
I do have comments, so I'm usually the branch of this, um, event, but, um, yes, um, however, um, I think that it is, it has been a great, um, experience and I got to, I got the pleasure of volunteering last year, uh, with my daughter. And it was great to see all the people that did come in from out of town and, um, just the joy that it brings to people and people being appreciative of that Atumla has something like this. So this may shock you all, but I'm not going to say my usual comments regarding this.
Any other comments from council?
Yes, your honor, I do. Okay, and I will agree with, uh, the majority here who would like to spend the five hundred dollars. I think it's a good investment. I can remember twenty years ago when they had volunteered people driving post in the ground to support the exhibits. And then they couldn't find enough electricity to keep them lit and they were going off at random times. So I, I think they've done a great job and for the twentieth annual holiday nights and lights, give them five hundred bucks.
And as that program has grown every year, I think the city electricians in the city has really worked hard to expand and make sure, like councilman Cavanis indicated, that there is enough electricity for all of those LED displays. And thank goodness they use LED displays because they don't use as much electricity either.
So all the lights are LED now, so we use a quarter of the power that we used before and it's a lot more user friendly. So there is able to be power for everything due to the city electricians and we're grateful for that. So, um, there's also a reduced, it will be Thursday through Sunday this year, and so there will also be reduced cost improvements.
Thank you, Shay. Any other comments? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number two oh eight, twenty twenty four, awarding the contract for asbestos abatement and demolition of the condemned property of five oh six Clinton to Weston McKee of Fairfield, Iowa, an amount of eight thousand for asbestos abatement and eight thousand for demolition for a total bid of sixteen thousand dollars. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number two oh eight, twenty twenty four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Zach.
All right, thank you, mayor, thank you, council. Um, this property at five oh six Clinton, you might remember from May when it was condemned. Mr. Hutchison, the property owner did file a timely action district court attempting to reverse the Port Health's decision to condemn the property. Uh, the city won that, uh, case and summary judgment, uh, but we did wait thirty days for his appeal window to also expire. Um, and now we do have, uh, a court certified, uh, decision to, um, demolish this property here. Um, we accepted bids for the demolition until two P M. on September fifth. And three asbestos bids and four demolition bids were received. Weston McKee submitted the best bid, the amount of sixteen thousand dollars, which is eight thousand for demolition, eight thousand for asbestos abatement. Then the staff recommends awarding the contract.
Council have any questions for Zach regarding this item?
I think it looks kind of strange that, that have two bids of eight thousand dollars and eight thousand dollars for asbestos abatement and demolition. I mean, okay, if it is, it is, but it looks funky.
Yeah, um, he's definitely very competitive in that total. Uh, the next best bid was sixteen thousand four hundred from Dustin Smith, so he's very close in cost. Yeah, the third bid combined is eighteen thousand four fifty. Uh, but yeah, it is a, a strange way to have split it. And I don't know, um, you know, if he was trying to be competitive, if there was a situation where the boxes got separated or something like that.
Thank you.
Him and his dad.
That's true, and that is a unique thing with this, uh, with Weston McKee, he and his dad are in business together. And one of them does asbestos and one of them does demolitions, they might value that region.
A lot of times he is the lower bidder.
He's very recently won a couple.
Council have any other questions for Zach on this item? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number two oh nine, twenty twenty four, adopting the twenty twenty four Atumla Historic Preservation Plan. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number two oh nine, twenty twenty four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Zach.
All right, thank you, mayor, thank you, council. Uh, this is the result of a planning process for the historic preservation plan that began in July of twenty twenty three. Uh, I mentioned that date first because it's a good explanation of why the consultants, uh, didn't come to do the presentation today. They had a conflict with this date, we thought about doing it in October, but we really wanted to get this wrapped up and finished. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and give this presentation for them. But I want to walk through a little bit of this, uh, this process. Does this clicker work or do I just?
Nope, I'm your clicker.
All right. Uh, the next slide here, uh, this really has some folks that we just wanted to, uh, extend gratitude to, uh, for working on this plan. Of course, the, the members of the council and the historic preservation commission staff, uh, as well as the Atumla Legacy Foundation. Their bright ideas grant program contributing twenty five thousand dollars, uh, or actually I think it's thirty thousand dollars, uh, toward completing this fifty five thousand dollar document. Um, and, uh, their support for our planning process throughout has really been greatly appreciated. Um, so folks that aren't named individually on here, uh, that I also want to thank, uh, there were ten different, uh, listening sessions that we had with various groups of stakeholders. We had educators, we had, uh, of course, folks that were involved in Main Street. We had several of you in other capacities, um, business. And I really want to appreciate the folks that participated, as well as the seventy, uh, members of the community that engaged in interviews or, um, engagements with our survey, things like that. Um, really, it's important to take, uh, that kind of feedback and it's critical to a lot of decisions that went into the plan. Uh, if you go to the next slide, uh, the plan is really an attempt to answer a question. Uh, what does the, what does the tumble want its past to look like in the future? Um, and the role of historic preservation is, um, economic development, it's cultural, it's quality of life. There's a lot of things that are in the comprehensive plan that intersect with, um, how we tell our story about our past. Uh, cultural tourism, heritage tourism is a big part of our strategy within Atumla, um, just as one example. And so, uh, the, the entire plan looks at how we achieve that. The comprehensive plan set as one of its goals, uh, that the, that the city of Atumla undertaken historic preservation plan in order to develop, uh, a work plan and a direction for how we want to address historic preservation in the future. Uh, going to the next slide. Uh, this document has several features. It, uh, documents the state of historic preservation in Atumla today that included reviewing our code, reviewing the way our commission works, um, looking at selling and looking at the condition of our existing historic resources. Um, it's supposed to help guide preservation decisions into the future by recommending a combination of incentives, regulations, and activities that can be undertaken by the historic preservation commission. Um, and it wants to imbue an ethic of historic preservation among the leaders of the community and among leaders of the city staff and of course, with the council and everybody involved in decision making. If you go to the next slide, this is the state of historic preservation in Atumla. We have seven national registered districts, um, that are kind of spread throughout the community. Uh, Vogel Place, Fellow's Avenue, Fifth Street Fluff, the Atumla Cemetery, the Railroad District, the Greater Second Street District, and the Court Hill District. Uh, are all individual, or I, I should say are all, uh, districts that have some sort of significant historic character that has been listed on the national register. We also have nineteen individually listed buildings and structures. Some of those are inside of historic districts, some of those stand alone, um, where they're located. Uh, we have fifty, uh, downtown buildings that have undergone facade improvements since Main Street was set up. Uh, we have the, uh, incentives that assist with doing that, the important work downtown, the roof brand, the light box, the paint, the, uh, interest buy down for, uh, uh, for borrowing to do work downtown. And we also have a tax abatement that's available with special for historic rehabilitation. And that's going to be one of the goals, uh, for the preservation commission is approving that historic tax. Uh, we also have the rounded Weston ignited housing grants, we have the build the tumble program. We have a lot of things that contribute toward, uh, helping to build, rebuild or restore the fabric of our historic districts. Uh, and of course, we have an active preservation commission and we participate as a certified local government. If you go to the next slide, these are some of the folks that attended the workshop that we had, um, for the plan. I think this was around February or March, um, had a great number of folks that were willing to turn up, uh, for our presentation. Did also have a lot of conversations around that room. There were also, uh, interactive exhibit, things like that. Uh, if you go to the next slide, uh, as I said, we had ten focus group meetings, we had that open house, we had the community survey, all the contributing feedback here. Uh, going to the next page, this is the recommendations in the plan and the first, and those broken into a few different areas. The first is nominations of local districts. If you go to the next one, the plan recommends several things. I will go through every single one of them, uh, but for our, uh, districts, what they really recommend is taking the next step in maturity as a preservation entity, um, identifying how we want to, um, in regulation and law, preserve and protect those resources. And it recommends operationalizing something that exists in our zoning code, which is an overlay for historic districts. And then we could look at implementing either full-on standards or guidelines, recommendations, things like that that people can use to improve properties within those historic districts. If we do go in a direction down the road of instituting some design standards, these would be rules that you have to follow if you want to change a contributing historic resource. Those standards have to be adapted or adopted with consent from folks within the property, uh, or within the district. They have to be a certain number, um, that petition or participate in deciding to adopt those regulations. So that will obviously be a source of much conversation down the road. Uh, another really important one here is that it does point out the need to designate some part of South Atumla as a local conservation district and to study potential nominations of historic resources on the south side. A couple of years ago, I got to participate in nominating a legacy school, uh, which is the first, uh, individual structure on the south side of Atumla to be, um, listed on the national register, but there's still a lot of room to go. Times change, what counts as historic, what qualifies changes. And we're at the point now where a lot of, um, post-war nineteen fifties and sixties houses are becoming eligible, mid-century homes are becoming eligible. And then, of course, we do have a lot of even before that historic resources on Chester and other parts of, um, the south side that are of critical importance to preserve as well. Uh, next is the historic preservation commission itself, and the, uh, plan has a couple of recommendations there. Uh, it thinks that we, uh, our historic preservation commission has a lot of folks that are really eager to do a wide variety of tasks. And some of those tasks aren't best done in a government condition with public meetings once a month. It's not a good way to plan education events and certain things without reach. And so they recommend, um, having that who shares some of those responsibilities in the same way that the parks advisory board shares with the friends in the parks, doing something similar with a nonprofit group that can assist the historic preservation commission, some of its fundraising or events or education, uh, promotion advocacy functions that, uh, are harder to deal with the condition. Go to the next section for catalyzing preservation, the number of recommendations here as well. And this is where it gets into some ideas around incentives or setting priorities. Uh, it says this is one of our medium term objectives, uh, choosing some kind of reconstruction or a compromise that'll allow us to, uh, restore the, uh, the brick streets of Fifth Street, Vogel, especially if need, uh, attention. It also calls out, um, prioritizing, uh, keeping the library downtown and doing some things to make that a successful, um, endeavor there as well. Um, and then, of course, some of the, uh, options for incentives or things that can encourage, uh, downtown, uh, growth as well. Uh, one of these we actually, um, accomplished while we were working on the plan. If you look at number five, that was the, uh, conversation we had around sprinklers. We've made some progress on, I should say accomplished, there's still road ahead, but we've made some progress on identifying the feasibility of alternative lifesaving solutions for downtown buildings. Um, going to number four, this is telling a tumble stories. They have a, a couple of recommendations there as well. Couple of slides ahead here. One of those would be to celebrate legacy businesses through some kind of legacy business designation. That's something that's catching on in a lot of communities and it allows the city, um, to, uh, recognize businesses that have been in the community for decades and contributed to the, uh, cultural fabric, the building itself for, uh, it might not be eligible for the district or the property owner might not want to list it on the district, but there are ways that we can still celebrate, formally celebrate, um, that. We can also, it looks at telling stories about unrepresented communities, formalizing the historic walking tours, uh, and just doing a lot more to, uh, to do that sharing of history, and I think that's the core of the goal here. Item five is amplifying preservation, has a few recommendations here as well. Um, and these can get at things like training and education, um, and publicizing the things that are available now. And that's really something that I think is going to be important going forward, especially on that historic tax abatement. Um, we have a three-year, one hundred percent abatement that's available through the open revitalization program for anyone that improves the value of property by just a ten percent, residential property by more than ten percent. Uh, but if it's a contributing historic resource, that can be extended to five years, one hundred percent. Uh, but it has to go through some approval to make sure that you're doing the right things there. Uh, right now, because we don't have any other design guidelines, the only thing that's really eligible is a historic tax credit project that's been approved by the state historic preservation office. That's the only set of standards we can look at. So we might look at implementing our own standards that will make that tax abatement more accessible to people who have historic property. Um, and then finally, number six is benchmarking preservation. And this calls on us to do a better job of collecting data and sharing data so that we can understand the economic impact of the activities we take with historic preservation. We absolutely know it's there, we know that the work that's been done downtown with facades, downtown revitalization has contributed to a large amount of, uh, growth and value. Um, and we want to, uh, make sure that we can tell the story of what that value, what that benefit could be for all sorts of historic resources and encourage folks to participate with a preservation mindset. Uh, the last thing we'll look at on the last slide here, uh, the plan, uh, includes something that we've done in a lot of other documents that have come out of the planning department, my time at the city, uh, is we took all of these, uh, goals, recommendations, and we set, um, priorities, we set a timeframe to get them accomplished, we tried to estimate costs, we tried to identify who's responsible. Uh, we tried to identify how to measure it, um, so that we can have a real work plan or a real path forward. Something that makes the document revisited again and again, and we check on progress. And that's something that we just try to do, uh, we did with the housing plan, we did with the comprehensive plan. Um, and that's something that was important to us having here as well. The whole document was included in the packet and will also live online. Uh, I did work with a consultant today and we are going to get a few copies printed bound as well. Um, have that available for the library or with the preservation commission, uh, for folks to review and take as well.
Council have any questions for Zach?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. Um, the historic, sorry, the historic preservation commission is, um, the commission that I sat on, the Atumla council.
The commission does have the vacancies.
I was, I was going to give a shameless plug.
Well, I was going to point out that you had it since we had.
Oh, my goodness. Um, anyway, Zach, um, yeah, I think that this recommendation will be a great asset to this commission. I think it'll provide much-needed direction, um, some purpose. Um, and yes, a shameless plug, there is positions open on this commission and other commissions as well. So apply, get out there to do something, help out. So, yeah, thank you. This was great.
And on that note, I'll just kind of follow up with what Cyan just said. I'm going to be working with Travis here pretty soon. And we do have some different commissions and boards that do currently have some various vacancies on them. So we're going to try and push that information out to the community because I don't think sometimes a lot of people know what those vacancies are. And we're going to try and do a better job of outreach and try and get some people aware of these vacancies and try and get other people energized to get involved in some of our boards and commissions. Any other questions for Zach regarding the historical preservation plan?
I remember several years ago, we looked at Fifth Street and repairing it, and there was a heart attack, cost wars. So I don't know where this has been fit in, but I also know thirty thousand dollars is not going to do it, so. We just need to take a look at what we're going to do and when we're going to do it and how much we're going to do.
Yeah, and, and the plan does, not a whole lot of detail there, it points out some of the ideas we can do as far as compromising. Look at stamped concrete, you could look at, um, maybe using brick for just portions of the street, uh, or trying to prioritize certain things. Uh, but we also, you know, can look at, uh, whether full reconstruction, that could be on the table. I mean, uh, it costs a lot of money, but that street has also been there and functioned more or less for over a hundred years. So, um, it might have, uh, there might be some room to justify cost if there's longevity. So a lot of factors to go into, uh, in making that decision, it's going to have a lot of stakeholders.
Yeah, I think when we talked about it before, uh, we were told that it is historic street. You can't mess with it unless you put it back just the way it was.
It could impact the, the listing on the, on the register, it's one of the contributing features.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number two ten, twenty twenty four, repeating the certain resolutions adopted at the September third, twenty twenty four, meeting number twenty eight. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number two ten, twenty twenty four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved. Second.
Any fellow?
All right, thank you, mayor. Uh, if you all remember last council meeting, we had four projects come up to approve the plans and specs. And I mentioned how we usually do the public hearing when we approve the plans and specs, but we didn't do it that time because it didn't, I noticed it didn't get published in time. When we took that language out of the staff summary, we did not take it out of the resolution. So on advice of our attorneys, they recommended that. So on advice of our attorneys, they recommended that we repeal the resolutions. And then, next council meeting, when we award the contract, we pull the public hearing then and include it in the resolution to abort the contract. So this is a paperwork error on our part, my part. So trying to correct it so we can move forward to the next council meeting, those projects.
Does the council have any questions for Philip?
You're about to make one mistake here. Philip, I'm not even sure this was your mistake. So I don't think you have to eat it all.
I could have caught it if I would have run closer and noticed that that fault is still in there.
You know, I'm just kidding.
Okay, is there any other questions, comments from council? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number two eleven twenty twenty four, establishing policy related to process and procedures for requesting the rental of city poles for displaying banners. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number two eleven twenty twenty four.
We have to, I'll call you up in a minute to mention the staff thing first.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Yep, please.
Second.
Okay, Phil, you're going to have to take this one.
Yes, I, I'll start this off, and, and I think we're going to add some color commentary to this. So I was approached about the possibility of hanging banners on city-owned street poles. Upon review, the city did not have a policy in place to consider such requests. The attached policy outlines a process for requesting, location of eligible poles, associated P, P structure for that, and a procedure for review or potential authorization of use of city poles for this purpose. And so the, the resolution basically just would adopt the street banner policy. And within the policy, it identifies the sections of River Drive, Church Street, Second Street, Jefferson Street Bridge, and Waplo Street Bridge. Market Street Bridge is one of them that was considered, but due to the current condition of the base of the poles and the concern that banners would have on the deterioration, further deterioration and possible public health and safety, Market Street at this time was not included with this.
I think you got that reversed.
Waplo Street not included. Oh, I'm sorry. So made that adjustment in the policy, replace market with Waplo then. So it should be Market Street Bridge, not Waplo Street Bridge. Thank you. But the rest of the policy would, would be there, talking about how to request display, run through the public information officer's office. And length of display would be minimum of thirty days, maximum of ninety days at a time. And if there's no one else that is in the way, so to speak, that could be granted, extension of fourteen days in the, during that period. Whole rental would be ten hours per pole per month or a fraction thereof. And they would need to have insurance and prioritization would be first come, first served basis. Does layout, content design for banners and installation and removal. The individual requesting would be responsible for installing or removing those banners. If they were to use or request the use of city staff, be compensated at the current rate for employees and equipment. So we wouldn't be out any of the cost with that. And that is kind of the policy. The last few pages kind of look at each area there. And so we swap out Market Street and Waplo there as stated just a moment ago. So with those provisions, the recommendation would be to approve the policy. And I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Okay, before we have the other people come up and speak, does council have any questions for Phil?
I'm just wondering who has authorized the use of these poles and putting the flags up up to this date. They've been there for two or three years at least, maybe longer.
There are, the hometown hero banners are up. That area is not part of this policy.
Okay, so.
That, that, those are in the Main Street district, and Main Street has been maintaining those. They hired somebody to put them up this last time. But they, they have their annual process to that, and they believe, give requests for the banners and have created and installed them.
Great. I'm glad we're not messing them up.
No.
Any other questions for Phil? If not, Ms. Ederman, would you like to come up? Alderman, sorry.
I just thought I'd share what pole, what banner would look like.
Thank you.
So what I shared with you is just an idea that October Regional would like for the October breast cancer awareness. We feel it's important to not only build the awareness, but also educate and inform the community how important it is to get your mammograms. So we thought it'd be great to kick off, build, you know, putting the banners on the poles throughout the city. Basically, I say light the, yeah, light the city in pink, just to build awareness and how important it is that getting your mammogram, getting your screenings, you know, saves lives. I brought with me also the director of radiology, who does all the difference for Lisa Garrison.
So I'll just speak on some of the importance of breast cancer awareness. One in eight women in the United States will develop breast cancer in her lifetime. So if you think about how many women you know, you most likely know more than eight women. Early detection is the key to a higher survival rate. And with early detection would be mammograms screenings. And Waplo County is an undersperved population with that. We are eleven percent below the state average for mammography, mammography screening. So that's why this is really important to get the awareness out there and show that we need, I mean, people need to get their mammograms.
How many districts were you planning on having these put out? Just one district or all the districts that Phil mentioned earlier?
All, all of them.
All of them? Okay.
Does council have any questions for these two ladies?
Are they happy with a ten dollar fee, and who gives them? Who makes you sign the banners?
I'm sorry?
Lee Designs.
We design. Oh, we do. The hospital does.
They're paying for the, the banners and then the mental.
And we pay for the rental. I need to take them from, yes.
Wow. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? If not, thank you for coming. Okay, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is where I ask if anyone in the audience would like to speak on any non-agenda items tonight. Okay, then we'll move to mayor, city council reports or any communications. I've already given some this evening. So I'll ask if the city council has any other communications or announcements that they'd like to make to the public?
Yes. So first, I just want to give accolades to Jean and the Atumla Park staff, and then also the campground host, too. We held our annual being the light suicide prevention walk. And again, the staff was amazing, helping us out and just helped to make for a really phenomenal event to raise awareness around suicide prevention. So thank you to all of them. And then, second, I want to announce on October first, we will start the registration again for our second, annual frights, nights and lights. So our Halloween nights and lights, spooky night, oh my goodness, our spooky nights and lights. Thank you. And this is, Travis will make a post on October first, opening on Facebook and opening it up for registration. So we hope that if you decorate your house or you know someone who does decorate their house, to get them registered. And then we'll have judges and the community go out this year and pick their favorites. And then we'll announce at the first meeting in November. So again, just another fun way to get the community out and have a little fun.
Is it possible to have a tie? Could you have two?
I guess we could.
Okay, thank you.
Are you going to decorate your house?
Uh, private.
You couldn't win anyways. You're on the council.
Any other announcements?
I just want to remind everybody, so my library, the library is great, doing awesome things. So everybody go to the library. But I do want to remind everybody that pages for pending sales on September twenty seventh, twenty eighth, and twenty ninth as the second one for the year. So coming out, this is really close.
Mayor already going to mention our trip over to Hattieville today?
I was going to see if you wanted to mention it.
I'm glad to.
Yeah, I think it'd be good for the public to know about it.
The mayor and I, among other people, made a trip over to Hattieville today. We got to get to see their wetland project, and it is no small deal. They have, as a company, four hundred and sixty acres of ground, and they have dedicated one hundred and thirty-three acres to their wetland project. And they've got it all laid out. They're planting trees and other things. They've got bird nests up on the trees and stuff. And they've got a ride, thank God we got a ride, golf carts through tour, and it just fabulous. This is very nice. And that makes them, I think, a good citizen for wetlands. And it makes us good citizens if we go over and partake of it. They want the public to come in and see it.
Yeah, their motto is eat well, live well, and they're very much into environmental preservation efforts. So it was a very interesting tour and ribbon cutting. And I am glad also that they let us ride on golf carts because the trail's pretty long. But it was pretty amazing. They're in the process of planting a lot of wildflowers, too. So it's going to be a huge thing that people will be able to enjoy in the future. And it does say a lot about Hattieville for their commitment to the environment. So it was a nice event to be invited to today.
Just a little plus, Paul, I'm sorry.
Go for it.
Just a little plus for me, I got to have lunch with our senator and a House representative from DuCheret. And Miss I. Okay, Keith, good job.
I, I have one more thing. I got so flustered trying to remember the name of the spooky nights and lights. I do want to, again, I feel what the mayor said earlier and thank councilperson Cyan. It's been an honor to sit here with you. I've learned a lot from you, and I appreciate that you brought a perspective of our community that we haven't had. You know, the, the multiple perspectives, and I truly appreciate it. I will miss sitting next to you, and I just thank you for all the time that you've put into this. And again, there are some commissions that will have open seats, and we would love to see you fill those, too.
And then I guess the only other announcement, city administrator, city clerk, Reinhardt, myself, councilman Hoffman, and councilman Cavaness will be gone tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday to attend the Iowa League of Cities Annual Conference. It'll be in Sioux City this year. So we're going to be gone in the next three days, but be back Friday late afternoon hopefully. It's always a good conference and a half-hour good breakout session. So it's something that I always look forward to attending every year. So some of us will be gone for the next few days, but we'll be back next week.
Mayor, are they gone yet?
Sure.
It's interesting to note, I can't remember his last name, the gentleman by the name of Tim, that leads the conference. He was there in two thousand and two, wholesome, when I was there.
Anything else? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn our city council meeting.
Push to adjourn.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and thank you, everybody, for attending our Atumla City Council meeting this evening. Safe travels.